Good evening, everyone. I call to order this February 25th, 2025, special meeting of the City Council at 3:37. Madam City Clerk, may we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Keegan.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson.
Here.
Councilmember DeToye.
Here.
Mayor Protem Seaman.
Here.
Mayor Francois. We have quorum.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk, do we have anyone for public comment in person and/or Zoom?
This is a time for members of the public to address the City Council on items listed on the special meeting agenda only. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Mayor Protem Seaman, we did not receive any speaker cards, and we do not have any virtual hands raised at this time.
All right then. So let's continue with the interviews. Item four on our agenda. So tonight, we have seven candidates, excuse me, six candidates, and we will call them up one at a time, and we will start with Andrea Giancoli.
Do you have any questions?
Oh, yes. Everyone has a list of questions. You're welcome to use any one of those questions, or use your own if you like. Each councilperson will ask the same question to each applicant, so no switching in between. So now we'll begin with Andrea Giancoli.
Do we have, do you have a particular question you're going to ask? Do we know in advance?
You can make up your own, or you can use the list that's there in front of you, any one of the ones on there, or whatever you would like.
Okay. Thank you. Hello, Andrea. How are you?
I'm good.
Nice to see you here.
Nice to see you all here as well.
Thank you for volunteering your service to the city. Appreciate that very much. We have some questions to ask you.
And who would like to start, left or right? Councilwoman Jackson?
that came in front of the city a few months ago, and they passed a thing on land value
Sure.
Good afternoon. Thanks for being here.
Thank you for having me.
Nice to see you.
Thank you all for being here as well and your service.
Nice to see you looking to get back into the city business. We've got a lot of good
recapture. Are you familiar with that?
I am familiar with the land value recapture fee.
candidates.
Indeed.
Yeah. So the fees were installed here, and I wanted you to kind of think and articulate,
Why you and not one of the other six?
Excellent question, and I'm sure they will all be excellent questions. As you
you know, what would be the pros of that kind of policy, and what could be the cons,
mentioned, it's nice to see me getting back into the community and the city and being
and how do you think that will evolve in the city, or what's your take on it?
involved and volunteering. It's something that's very important to me, to be of service Well, how it will evolve does remain to be seen. I understand the purpose of it, to the community. And I've lived here in Hermosa for almost seventeen years now, and I've been to create funding for other things in this city, like affordable housing, and it gives on the Public Works Commission. I've been very involved in leadership Hermosa Beach. an incentive for builders to build affordable housing in their developments. I'm anxious I was on the Access Working Group as well as General Plan Working Group, and it's exciting to see some of that coming to light now. And I am dedicated, I'm passionate, and I to see how it plays out, and a little concerned about how it might be a disincentive to business, bring balance and openness to the Planning Commission, so I think that's why I feel that but I think we don't really know quite exactly how that's going to play out. But like you said, there are pros and cons, and I have my concerns. And I also feel if it's going I am a good candidate for this commission.
Thank you.
to be giving funds to services that we need, like affordable housing, so that we can comply, that's a pro. And then the con is, is it going to stop any kind of ingenuity and innovative, you know, development here?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Why don't you go round a little?
Yeah, you want to wait a few minutes?
Do you want to get your bearings first?
Andrea, I appreciate your time here today. This is sort of a hypothetical question, but it's quite serious regarding Hermosa Beach in the future. So if you had total control over the future of the world, hypothetically, of course, what would the future of Hermosa Beach look like in regards to density?
In regards to density, the future of Hermosa Beach? Well, we don't have a lot of room to increase density in Hermosa Beach. We're pretty compact, and when you say density, I mean, you're talking about all levels of density, whether it be business, whether it be residents. That's how I look at it as well. We do have state laws that we have to comply with, especially for affordable housing, but we don't really have a lot of room to grow in Hermosa Beach. But we do want to be open to people who come here and welcome them. So I think, again, this is a, you know, a pro/con. Do we necessarily want more housing when we already have housing as it is? Maybe we need to take another look at what that means and how we can balance the needs for people who want to come here with the residents who already live here.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andrea, for applying and putting her name forward. This question is, so one of the guiding principles of Plan Hermosa is to contribute to the economic and fiscal stability of the city. How do you demonstrate your leadership in achieving this principle as a planning commissioner?
Well, as a planning commissioner, I also have just joined the Board of Directors for the Chamber of Commerce and Visitors Bureau, and I've been listening to some businesses and local vendors who have businesses in the city and how they are affected compared to other cities. And I feel like that will help me bring a different opinion, a diversity of opinion. I think it's very important to have a balanced approach on the planning commission. I feel like I bring that. We don't want everyone to all have the same opinion and to not be listening to what the community is saying or to what businesses are saying in general. So I feel I bring that balanced and open and unbiased approach. Your turn.
Andrea, hi.
Hi.
That's how we say your name. Is it Andrea?
I like all of the pronunciations.
All of them. Okay. I wasn't sure. I thought I'd been corrected in the past. Anyway.
Probably not by me.
Welcome here this evening.
Thank you.
What example do you have in your past experience to show that you are an independent thinker, and maybe you've gone against the grain to get something done?
Excellent question.
Sorry if it's tough. We always like to have commissioners that are going to do that, don't we?
Well, it goes back to Councilmember DeToye's question as well, is providing balance. And what I pride myself in is I listen, and I hear, and I listen to both sides. And I don't necessarily, when I was a Public Works Commissioner, I would come in with, obviously I've read staff reports and everything, but I would come in and listen to what other commissioners had to say, what the public had to say, and make my decision based on that. And it has been, there have been a lot of difficulties while I was on the Access Hermosa, and we're still together, but we haven't had a meeting in a long time. The walkway, the accessible pathway on the Green Belt was a difficult project to make work. And I see Councilmember Seaman nodding his head on that as we worked together on that, and we did have to go against the grain on that. There were many, many community members who were against it. There still are many community members who are against it. But the purpose of it and the real essence of it is to provide access for all. And I think we've done that with the Green Belt and also with the mats on the beach, and I'm very proud of that, even though it was not a popular position to take at the time.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. It's been a pleasure.
Good evening. How are you doing?
Doing well. How are you guys?
Okay. Okay. You are Eric Horn.
Yes, I am.
Beautiful. Thank you. I've met you before.
You have met me before.
Okay. Let's start with the end. Councilmember Jackson, you have the first question?
Thank you for applying, Mr. Horn. Appreciate your willingness to get involved in city affairs and for stepping up. It's something, it's appreciated. We've got a lot of great candidates, all very impressive on paper, and I'm sure they're all going to be impressive in the year. You're one of seven, and why you and not the other, one of the other six?
Absolutely. Well, Mayor Francois, Mayor Protem Seaman, council and staff, just really appreciate your time in interviewing me. I was just in the waiting room with, you know, the other candidates, and you're right, there's some incredible talent, and so you guys got your work cut out for you in selecting somebody. I'll just tell you a little bit about myself and why I want to serve and, you know, what I'm bringing to the table here. I grew up in Hermosa Beach. I want to serve on the Planning Commission because this is my home. This is my town. After a couple of years away, working, going to college, grad school, I recently moved back. And since I moved back, I've just been really impressed by the civic scene here in Hermosa Beach. I've been getting really involved. I've served on the Civic Facilities Advisory Group and gotten really familiar with a lot of the issues facing our town. I want to serve because public service is what I do for a living. I started after college in the Peace Corps and then at the Food and Drug Administration, working with Congress on COVID-19 funding, and now I'm an executive at a nonprofit that's working on wildfire legislation reform. You know, since returning, I've noticed there are a couple of challenges facing our town that I'd like us to be able to address as a city and on the commission. And, you know, those are, the fact that we're in a housing crisis. We are in a housing crisis, and it's incredibly expensive to live here, but it's really the secondary effects of the housing crisis that we have to deal with here in Hermosa Beach, which is the fact that Sacramento has been passing some incredibly restrictive, one-size-fits-all laws that are going to determine how we are able to develop as a city unless we think very carefully and very thoughtfully about our future planning. I also see yellow warning lights when it comes to business here in Hermosa Beach. You know, we have a vibrant downtown and a vibrant commercial sector in PCH and aviation, but I've heard from a lot of business owners that they don't feel that the city is doing enough to be a good partner to business, and I'd like to see us address that. In terms of what I'm bringing to the table, I've done public service, I've been engaged with the city, and I'll say that, you know, my education in business, I received my MBA at Harvard Business School, has given me a strong foundation to be able to look at not just what are the financial ramifications of, say, permitting or zoning decisions that we make as a town, but what are the supply and demand effects of zoning on housing, you know, maintaining growth in our home prices, maintaining certain levels of housing for low income, and, you know, thinking through how do we actually create vibrancy and foot traffic downtown? These are things that my education has prepared me well for, and I think my professional experience as well. Thank you very much.
Eric, thank you for applying. Appreciate your stepping into traffic, and I wanted to ask you a question about something that came about in the city a few months ago. We passed some legislation to bring forward land value recapture, and I don't know if you heard about it or saw it, but it was a process, and I wondered if you might give us your opinion of it, maybe the pros and the cons of it, and how you see it might affect development downtown or just development in the state.
Absolutely. Thank you for the question. Land value recapture is, it's a controversial issue, and there's a lot of ways to look at it. You know, we want to create an environment in which commercial business owners are able to help us contribute to our RENA housing allowance. You know, RENA has us on the hook for 558 units of housing by 2029, and even with 64 ADUs that we're able to build over the next couple of years, maybe, we've still got 494 units of housing to meet. And, you know, mixed-use development and mixed-use overlays on the downtown pier corridor and PCH corridors could be a useful way for us to meet some of those targets. But with land value recapture, you know, there are different opinions on whether this will actually incentivize the construction of the mixed use or whether it's a barrier. You know, when you upzone a property to be able to do residential, you're of course increasing the value of that property, and it makes sense that the city would want to get some of that value so that you can put it into, say, a fund for affordable housing. At the same time, though, I have heard from business owners that there are concerns that having to pay the city a balance of the increase in value from that upzoning could make, it could be a disincentive to actually doing the project in the first place. I support the goals of land use recapture, but, you know, in terms of how it plays out in our city, I think we're going to have to look here in the next year, maybe three years, on how it's playing out, and, you know, is it accomplishing the goals that we're trying to as the council and on the planning commission?
Thank you for your analysis.
What, could you give an example of something you've done in the past, or what experience you might have in showing that you're an independent thinker, or what have you done that has been against the grain to get something done in any type of group situations you've been in?
Absolutely. Great question. So right now, as I mentioned, I work on wildfire policy and legislation. That means that, you know, every day, I'm liaising with Democrats and Republicans in Congress at the federal level and in the legislature, and I can tell you that, you know, there are enormously competing constituencies and values for passing any type of legislation, and you have to get creative and think independently on how you can build And I would stand up in senior meetings and say, no, actually, we did not spend this money on this project. We need to be transparent and faithful in our accounting of the funds and our deliberations with Congress. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric, for being here this evening. I have a little bit of a hypothetical question for you.
Sure.
If you had total control over the future, what would the future Hermosa Beach look like in regards to density?
Yeah. Well, I'm glad I don't have that responsibility because that would be incredibly difficult to deal with. You know, with density, we have to recognize we're already essentially a built-out town. I mean, Hermosa is the 21st most dense city in California. Seventy-five percent of our land area is already zoned for residential. And of that land area, 35% is already zoned for high-density residential. In addition, only 0.5% of our land is actually vacant right now. So when I think about density and the future of development, I mean, our options are very slim in terms of new development. We have considerations to make in terms of meeting the goals that Sacramento has given to us. But we have to be very thoughtful here. And I would not do anything that would jeopardize what Plan Hermosa refers to as community character areas. Plan Hermosa has been a really helpful guide for me in both preparing for this interview and also just thinking through these questions of how we should develop because it doesn't take a one-size-fits-all approach to zoning and to density. You know, the north end area where I live is, it's largely single-family R1 zoning with a smattering of duplexes mixed in. You have small community commercial outlets like Bacados and the North End Bar and Grill and Getana Coffee. And you don't have the kind of, you know, really dense multifamily housing that you have in, say, the Hurando area. Now, I used to live at the Gallery Apartments. And the dense apartment zones that are on the south side of town, they play a really important and vibrant role in our community in giving folks different options for housing. But, you know, with Plan Hermosa in mind, I would say we have to just look at every single project one at a time. And when we're doing density and we're trying to meet our housing needs under RENA, we have to be just thinking really carefully about how does this development actually interplay with all of the community residential around that property? Are we doing something that's going to stick out like a sore thumb? Or is it something that could actually slot seamlessly into what's already there and the existing land use and development patterns? So I think that that's how I would look at that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eric, for being here. I know you mentioned this earlier, so I just wanted to kind of expand on it. But one of the guiding principles of Plan Hermosa is to contribute to our economic and fiscal sustainability. How would you demonstrate leadership in achieving this principle as a planning commissioner?
Absolutely. Well, you know, I'm really pleased that the planning commission has already taken a lot of steps on this. I mean, Hermosa is a special place to live, not just because it's beautiful, but because we have such a vibrant business scene. There's so many things to do on a weekend or a weeknight. And a couple of the things that I would be thinking about on the planning commission to keep Hermosa a vibrant place to do business are, number one, keeping downtown active and thriving. I think our zoning and conditional use permit allocation should prioritize retail, restaurants, and service attractions on the ground floor of as many buildings in downtown as we can. I think where possible, we should avoid having offices and residential housing on the ground floor in our major commercial arteries. I would also look at Hermosa Beach's permitting process. Things like limited events, temporary minor special event permitting and conditional use permits, it can be a real maze for businesses to navigate this. I'm really pleased that in the last couple of months, the planning commission, on the direction of city council, has been looking at the temporary minor special events permits. And where they started, after robust debate and public comment and back and forth, they went from looking at having 12 events per year to 36 days per year, where the businesses can decide when and how to allocate those days for these special events in a way that actually makes sense for their business so that you can attract some really awesome events. That's, I think, kind of like the common sense, pro-business reforms that the planning commission can continue to work on. You on the council will be considering that item in your March 25 meeting, and I look forward to hearing those deliberations. Another thing that I would say is not neglecting PCH and aviation. Some of my favorite businesses in town are on PCH and aviation. Everything from Ocean Diner to ET Surf to Barron's on Fifth Street. I mean, we have to remember that, you know, zoning and conditional use permits and all these different things we're looking at on the planning commission, they don't just apply to downtown. We have to take a holistic look at Hermosa Beach and figure out how we can help all of our businesses. And then one last thing I would say is every time I have visitors from out of town, they're always really dazzled by the public art and the murals that we have in Hermosa Beach. They are attracted to go check out shops that have really awesome artwork on the side. And one of the things that I've heard is that we should consider, instead of having the planning commission review every single piece of public art, maybe having that be a city staff process where the planning commission would only get involved if there's an appeal.
Thank you very much.
Pleasure.
Thanks so much.
Is that all your questions?
We're done.
Thank you for your consideration, gentlemen.
We're limited to one because we have a lot of people to get through.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah. Thanks for your time and look forward to hearing the deliberations later.
Thank you.
Hi, how's it going?
Hi there.
Hi.
You must be Adrian.
I am Adrian.
Welcome. Okay. Thanks for applying this evening. We are allowed one question per council member. We're going to start with Councilmember Jackson and just go right down the line there.
Sounds good.
Good evening. Thanks for being here. Thanks for your willingness to throw your name in the hat and apply for a very important position with the city. You're one of seven very impressive folks with great resumes who have done great things and are looking to do more. Tell me why we should select you and not one of the other six?
I think that I have, I think there's a couple of things that I would double-click on about my experience and just my general disposition towards probably local government, which is to say I really enjoy civic service, but I don't think is different than those who have obviously, you know, put their hat in the ring as well. I do have a lot of experience in land use planning, whether that's overseeing long-range, short-range, stakeholder engagement. I have a lot of understanding and tolerance for the public process. And I think that I have been in a number of experiences that give me a particularly acute perspective on how to balance things like the vision of a community with fiscal responsibility, the needs for revenue generation, and also the needs of residents and its businesses. And how do you really navigate and construct a process and the feedback loop that creates an effective outcome and creates a dialogue that actually brings everyone into a space where they can understand how they relate to it, albeit coming from very, very different perspectives? So I think my stakeholder management skills, I think, and expertise in how to navigate that is probably one of the attributes that I possess that is a distinguishing quality of my background.
Great. Thank you very much.
Welcome. Thanks for applying. I wanted to ask you a question about an issue that came before, and we've set up a new program for land value recapture. I wanted you to maybe weigh in on whether you think the pros, what the pros are of that type of legislation and the cons and any hurdles that you might see or pitfalls or benefits.
Yeah, I would say for land value recapture, there's, I think you tend to hear about sort of the cons from the developer's side for sure. I will say, in the broader context of economic development activities and city development, when they sort of struck down redevelopment agencies many moons ago in 2012, it left a lot of vacuum in terms of the tools that communities had in California to meaningfully generate economic development projects and to meaningfully generate, frankly, revenue opportunities that are confined either place-based or are tied to developers. And as a result, I think we've had to get really, really creative. And I personally see that as a creative strategy to sort of backfill some of the tools that were taken away, like to financing. So I think there are cons in the sense that you're competing with other cities that don't have it. And I think that's actually the biggest drawback, which is to say there's a perception that you can just go here instead of here. But I think in the context of Hermosa Beach, which has a really unique set of assets and a really unique disposition as a community, I actually think it can be utilized in a really effective way. Again, probably through a lot of communication and ensuring that then there's transparency around both how it's recovered, how it's administered, and then what's done within the long range.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
You have quite an impressive set of things on your resume here.
Done my best.
Okay. So in your past experiences, commissions and other things you've been involved in, and we always like to look for someone that's an independent thinker. So I was wondering if you could give an example of some of your past experiences that show that you are an independent thinker and when you might have gone against the grain to get something done?
Yeah, I have, so I was trained as an urban planner. I took a bit of a different path away from urban planning, turned into a non-traditional background and focused more on sort of business, good market strategies for advanced technology, worked in public-private. I think in general, that was a little bit of against the grain and against the general thinking, at least with my class when I graduated many, many moons ago for my master's, was to do something different, something experimental, and just test the waters. Can you do public? Can you do private? Can I try out this? Am I good at sales? Really tried to sort of press myself into different environments that I think weren't expected of me. I would say a really tactical example in maybe a setting that's very similar of going against the grain. I was on the Central Area Planning Commission for the City of Los Angeles. We, one of our responsibilities was zoning, basically appeals. That said, it's the most developed, highly-developed, densest district, downtown Hollywood, mid-Wilshire corridor. It's a very lawyered-up community. And so I say that to say most of the things that are being brought in front of you, the zoning administrator is liable for their decisions and their actions, so they are airtight. The lawyers are airtight. The projects are high-value and high-risk if they don't go through. So you weren't doing a lot of overturning, right? You weren't doing a lot of going against what the sort of baked-in decision was that was presented to you. There were a couple of different instances where we did decide to overturn, but in those rare instances, I thought that the rationale and the underlying rationale that my other commissioners were advocating for was a bit flawed. It was very specifically sort of focused on an individual type of business. 7-Elevens are X-type of way and thus this project is moving forward. From a economic development standpoint for the city and a business attraction standpoint, that did not sit well for me to just name out different sort of industries and sectors that actually contribute to the economy. There were other factors at play. And I think there were just multiple instances where we were very quorum-based and sort of vote by consent. All five of us usually got behind something. And I think I was generally the person who had to try and push really tough questions and tough realities about the decisions we were making and what are the downstream impacts of that, which I think intuitively, we were responding in the moment to residents, the city council, to neighborhood councils. And I think it took a lot of courage in general because I was the newest and youngest member of that board. But I thought it was a really effective role that I played in the context of that commission because I do think they needed it at the time.
Okay. Thank you.
Hello. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Bit of a hypothetical question.
Yeah.
Let's assume for a moment that you had total control over the future.
Okay.
What would the future Hermosa Beach look like in regards to density?
I think we're pretty, I mean, I'm a planner. I love density. It's one of the reasons I love Hermosa Beach. And I've, you know, grew up here and moved in and out here throughout my life. That said, I think we're pretty maxed out on density. And I think any additions to it would have to be like a very, very carefully managed and very carefully thought-out process of how do you organize sort of your land use, your zoning, the needs of residents, the needs of businesses. But I, as one of the densest beach communities in all of California, I think that's a hard, going any further would require some significant changes in the way that we identify, I think, as a community and the way that our sort of civic fabric is constructed. So I would probably keep it as-is and just build on what we have to optimize the space that we do have to create as much sort of cohesion with the level of density that we have. And I do think in a city of this size, you have a rare opportunity to do that, right? How do you organize effectively to optimize the opportunity and the density that you have, where you see it sort of mal-distributed in a lot of places?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much for applying and being here tonight, this afternoon. One of the guiding principles of Plan Hermosa is to contribute to our economic and fiscal stability. How will you demonstrate leadership in achieving this principle as a planning commissioner?
Yeah, I think that one of the, like, you know, I think one of the things that, having lived here for a number of years in, you know, around 2009, 2013, being gone for 10 years and coming back, we have like a, we have revenue sort of considerations and we have like a real fiscal situation that has to be sort of managed and dealt with. And I think we have to act with fiscal responsibility and at the same time, seek to deliver sort of on the vision that the community sets forth for themselves and for their community. And I think what we tend to do is move towards the worst possible, like, cash-saving scenario that's not very attractive, not very ambitious, but it does sort of feature fiscal responsibility in a certain realm. Or you go towards these really large, ambitious projects, right, that are just very tough for a community to tolerate. And it can be difficult, I think, to get people into a space, and I think it takes a lot of public engagement to get people into a space, to help them understand what trade-offs are being made in each situation and that there usually is some sort of middle ground that can respect ambitious goals for the community, including economic development and business traction, economic activity, and also be mindful and respectful of the need to be fiscal stewards and financially responsible. So yeah, I think from a leadership standpoint, my value add there tends to be around my ability to get people who are generally in different camps using language to help them understand their, you know, mutual points of view. I worked in a lot of public and private, done public-private partnerships, a lot of project finance, a lot of planning exercises for a lot of different types of jurisdictions. And I found that that is really how you can help people get to a middle ground that they can actually align on and get consensus towards moving forward. A lot of tactical engagement.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
You're limited to one question each.
Yes.
Have a lot to go through.
Appreciate y'all's time today.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Mayor and members of the city council, as a reminder, Josh Kaye did withdraw earlier today. For anyone watching through our channels, they can be aware that he will not be interviewing
But I, as one of the densest beach communities in all of California, I think that's a hard, going any further would require some significant changes in the way that we identify, I think, as a community, and the way that our sort of civic fabric is constructed. So I would probably keep it as-is, and just build on what we have to optimize the space that we do have, to create as much sort of cohesion with the level of density that we have. And I do think in a city of this size, you have a rare opportunity to do that, right? How do you organize effectively to optimize the opportunity and the density that you have, where you see it sort of mal-distributed in a lot of places?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much for applying, and being here tonight, this afternoon. One of the guiding principles of Plan Hermosa is to contribute to our economic and fiscal stability. How will you demonstrate leadership in achieving this principle as a planning commissioner?
Yeah, I think that one of the, like, Ken and I think one of the things that, having lived here for a number of years, and, you know, around 2009, 2013, being gone for 10 years and coming back, we have, like, we have revenue sort of considerations, and we have like a real fiscal situation that has to be sort of managed and dealt with, and I think we have to act with fiscal responsibility, and at the same time, seek to deliver sort of on the vision that the community sets forth for themselves and for their community. And I think what we tend to do is move towards the worst possi, like, a cash-saving scenario that's not very attractive, not very ambitious, but it does sort of feature fiscal responsibility in a certain realm. Or you go towards these really large, ambitious projects, right, that are just very tough for a community to tolerate, and it can be difficult, I think, to get people into a space, and I think it takes a lot of public engagement to get people into a space, to help them understand what trade-offs are being made in each situation, and that there usually is some sort of middle ground that can respect ambitious goals for the community, including economic development, and business traction, and economic activity, and also be mindful and respectful of the need to be fiscal stewards and financially responsible. So yeah, I think from a leadership standpoint, my value-add there tends to be around my ability to get people who are generally in different camps using language to help them understand their, you know, mutual points of view. I've worked in a lot of public and private, done public-private partnerships, a lot of project finance, a lot of planning exercises for a lot of different types of jurisdictions, and I found that that is really how you can help people get to a middle ground that they can actually align on and get consensus towards moving forward. A lot of tactical engagement.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you so much!
You're limited to one question each, and I have a lot to go through, so, thank you.
Absolutely, thank you.
Mayor and members of the city council, as a reminder, Josh Kaye did withdraw earlier today. For anyone watching through our channels, they can be aware that he will not be interviewing today.
Good evening. How are you doing this evening?
Pretty well, thanks.
Great to see you.
Thank you.
We are each going to be asking you one question, and we'll start on my right, and go down the...
Good evening, Mr. Gregg, good to see you.
Nice to see you, sir.
Thanks for tossing your name in the hat, stepping up to serve. You sat in that room for a few minutes, and you met all of your, yeah, exactly.
Well, you know, it's really wonderful, there's so many people willing to serve, and there's some great candidates, and some wonderful people, all well-intentioned, and I'm here to tell you why I'm the best candidate today.
Well, that's my question, all right? You met the others.
Yeah.
Dang impressive. Why you?
Super simple, guys. All parts of my life, from my faith, my family, to my career, and to my community, I have not just been someone who shows up, but I really participate. My wife and I went to Miracost High School and grew up here. My daughter went through the entire Hermosa Beach High School. We've been homeowners here for almost 25 years, in two homes. So when I moved away from Hermosa Beach, I moved 10 blocks away. So I'm pretty well committed, okay? With that being said, my commitment to this community since I was in high school, starting as a volunteer at the Ridgestone Center with Dorothy Courtney, I've gone through every step after returning here in 1997, trips to Loretto with Sister City. The museum, I think, is just the one thing that I'm most proud of in the decade-long service I've had there, and the success we're having, and how close we are to that accreditation, which is so very, very important. Professional standpoint, for my almost 40 years, I've worked as a small business owner, operator, consultant, and I'm currently a business owner here in the City of Hermosa Beach, very proud of that. But I also want to share with you that the decade-long service I had with Irvine Company, in which I worked in, the Irvine Company is the largest privately-owned land company in the United States, in retail, residential, as well as commercial properties. I worked on multiple properties from concept development, to planning, to licensing, development, operations. So I've had an opportunity to understand what this role really entitles, and the skills and the necessary that's there. My local, deep local knowledge allows me a benefit to the others, and my professional experience, as well as my commitment to this city, prove that I'm ready to work with the others.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for applying. My question is about an issue that came before the city a few months ago on land value recapture. It's a program that has been put in place, and I wanted to get your opinion on some of the pros or the cons of that concept, and just your general idea towards what you think that's gonna, where that's gonna go or not go, just some opinions on it. What do you think of that?
Michael, I expected something like that. I've just heard of land value capture, and without having more understanding or a deeper knowledge of that, I'm not able to give you that strong of an answer at this time, and I look forward to spending more time on it.
I was wondering if you could give me an example of something you've done in your past, past experiences to show that you are an independent thinker, and maybe something specific you've done against the grain in the group you've been in to get something accomplished?
Independent thinker? I started my first business when I was 24 years old. I was told I did not have the experience, the finance, and was not capable of doing it. All I knew is that I was too young, too inexperienced, and didn't have the capital to do it. And that company ended up turning into a $5 million multi-unit, multi-concept restaurant company that sold in San Francisco. That concept has gone on to be a national concept in every city in the United States, or many, many cities, and allowed me to come home and buy a home in the place that I grew up.
Okay, thank you.
Hi Gregg, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
So, a bit of a hypothetical question to start with.
Please.
If you had total control over the future, what would the future Hermosa Beach look like regarding density?
We are already one of the most dense small communities in California. While living and working in San Francisco, the density up there was immense. The density is, we have to, by state law, continue, I believe the housing project, the housing plan has already been in the works, is being reviewed by the state. It's important for us to increase the housing, and it's something we have to do. I do believe that it's going to be a very difficult challenge, in the fact that we just don't have any more room, and I know that I look out my shower and see my neighbor in the kitchen. So, I don't know exactly how far we're gonna go with that, but we have to do it, and I look forward to working on resolve.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here tonight, and applying for this very important commission. One of the guiding principles of Plan Hermosa is to contribute to the economic and fiscal stability. How will you demonstrate your leadership in achieving this principle as a planning commissioner?
That's a great question, I appreciate that. It is so important to weigh both the economic and personal of every single project. It's important for us to make sure and recognize that when making decisions on either residential or commercial properties, that we're looking at the best uses for the city and the community, and not just the individual at that point. We all know that when there is conflict, or a change, or happening in a personal property, such as commercial and/or residential, it's very emotional, and have to weigh those, but the fact of the matter is that that decision has to be made on what's best for the community and the services around, while larger, more in-depth projects need to be looked at on how they impact the city on a financial way. So, those are two very different projects, and they have to be weighed independently to point upon those facts.
Well, thank you very much, and thank you for keeping your answers brief. We're only allowed to ask one, because we have a big slate of people to go through, but thanks for coming.
I want to give it one, gentlemen, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have Nathaniel Tribble.
Good evening, good afternoon.
How's it going?
How are you doing?
No complaints. How are you doing?
Thank you so much for applying. There's a lot of people that apply, but thank you for putting yourself out there and contributing to the community, and we're going to have each council member just ask one question only, and we're gonna start down here and go down the line. So, Councilmember Jackson.
Nice to see you, Mr. Tribble.
Good to see you.
And thanks again for your work on the Cannabis Advisory Group. That was, you guys did a great job, so thank you for your contribution to that. You sat in the room with six other candidates, all equally impressive. Why, Mr. Tribble?
Well, that's a, that's a good question, and it's exciting to see the volume of applicants for the role, you know? It's always good to see that degree of participation. I think those of you that saw some of my work on the committee are aware of that. My personal track record of successfully closing a couple of startups, I teach business and finance at Harvard College in Wilmington, all speak to someone who's really committed to helping you do the work of getting something done. And so, one differentiator is that I have skin in the game, insofar as I love Hermosa Beach. I've moved back here twice, and hope to finish planning routes, and staying here, and keeping our hamlet, this lovely city that it is. But my role is to help you, and I don't bring a lot of extra baggage to that. If you, if you watched any of that cannabis committee, you saw there were people that had ideological perspectives, there were people who wanted absolute bans, and people that thought that, you know, cannabis is a God-given right to everyone. And trying to cut through that is what we need to do, the work of extending permits, or understanding zoning, modifying and implementing state law, you know, implementation that contradicts some of the goals that we might have, or how we can best adjudicate those. And so, it's kind of a long-winded answer to the question of how do you differentiate yourself? I'm not gonna differentiate myself on a question of skills or experience necessarily, but it's a commitment to a pragmatic resolution of conflicting interests that we have. And it's lovely to see the passionate folks that come up and speak and offer comments here, but working with someone who has experience navigating conflicting desires and conflicting goals for the city is the only way to make the planning commission useful as a vehicle and an arm for this committee.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you for applying. My question's about an item that was passed recently by this body about land value recapture. It's a newer program that's implemented in a few cities, and wanted you to weigh in on what you thought the pros, the cons, or just your opinion on the concept itself is fine, too.
So, it's, given my previous answer, that I don't have an ideological, I don't, I don't see myself as having an ideological perspective on any particular issue that comes before the commission. I almost don't think, without sidestepping your question, I don't think that my perspective on it is necessarily relevant. I think ultimately what's helpful is how I can help implement the decision that was approved here. And to that effect, I think my academic research, my academic research in the area of specifically land use policy and urban development, was relevant here in terms of helping implement and navigate the regulatory requirements that are associated with that. I think there are probably potential, I don't want to say challenges, but complications based on, on state implementation and state legislation, and I think it's gonna be necessary to figure out how we navigate potential challenges, and working with the committee on the exact implementation is where, is where that matters most.
Thank you.
Okay, good evening. You know, lots of times we look for planning commissioners that will be some sort of an independent thinker, and having said that, what, what example could you bring us to show in your past, how you've demonstrated that quality, or, and/or what you've done to gone against the grain to actually get something accomplished? Thank you.
Well, I think actually, it's kind of an optimal question, given where I started, which is, the cannabis committee had two fairly disparate political opinions advocated and pushed forward, right? There was a camp of folks who thought that Hermosa Beach shouldn't be involved at all in anything relating to cannabis, or medical, or marijuana sales anywhere in the city. There was a, a few folks on that particular committee who were, I guess you could call them cannabis maximalists, who thought we should legalize everything and support everything that could possibly happen. And then there were, you know, there was me, and my perspective was that we should do what makes the most sense for the city pragmatically, what we could do, you know, whether it's listening to what Chief LaBaron had to say as far as what was the best sort of legal, safe approach, but also, you know, being mindful that there are disparate opinions throughout our city on the issue. And so, pushing forward the suggestion of maybe legalizing or permitting delivery, but not a retail space, as a political compromise, I think, is the independent perspective. I think, it, it's hard to compromise without having people feeling that they are compromised, and, that, that, that's what I do. You know, I, I think the, the probably most formative experience I have in my life, not just professionally, is I was a national debater from middle school through college. I coached several national champion debaters, and most people will say that research and public speaking are the skills that you need to do that, but I think if you dig a little bit deeper, it's also, and more important, that someone have both intellectual and emotional empathy. And so, to the extent that my thinking is independent, is really a function of, I think that I'm uniquely situated to listen to multiple perspectives, and synthesize them in a way that's useful for contributing to additional thought, or useful for making decisions. And it's easy to be ideological and political now, and, and there's, there's coverage everywhere of that. I think what makes me different is that I am pragmatic, beyond all else. And I think that's, you know, my, my work on the commission there, I think, kind of demonstrated that, that taking, the, the middle ground happened to be the, the independent position there, if that makes sense.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for being here today. I appreciate your offer to serve the city. I have kind of a, a little bit of a hypothetical question for you.
Okay.
So you have a little leeway here.
Okay.
If you had total control over the future, complete control over the future, what would the future Hermosa Beach look like in regard to density?
I'm, I'm sorry that I'm laughing, only because, vibrancy is the word that I've heard a lot in, in public forums, in front of this committee, in front of the planning And I, I made this comment earlier, that, that we want vibrancy, but we don't want congestion. In a scenario in which I could wave a, a, a magic wand, and, and we could all have, you know, apartment complexes that allowed millions of people to magically live in Hermosa, and for us to not have traffic, and for everyone to have ample parking south of, west of Valley, right? Like, of, of course, but that's not possible. And, and, and so, almost the very reason I started my, my, my answer to the question of, I don't have necessarily an ideological vision for this, is precisely because I don't, I, I can't answer a question like that. I love, I, I, I left and came, left Hermosa for, for, for work reasons, my syrup was sold, and the, as soon as I could get back, I did. And we all want growth, but we know that that risks changing the character of what makes Hermosa the hamlet that it is. And I'm fortunate enough to be interested in the planning commission, because those aren't necessarily the questions we have to answer, but to help you find an answer. And so, if the determination of this board, of this council, is that we want to pursue a particular growth strategy, then I consider myself someone who can help facilitate that, providing you and helping you make that decision based on how you calibrate what character of the city you want. You know, I, I love Hermosa the way it is, but I don't think that, that means things shouldn't change, or won't change, you know? Even in the, the eight years, or I guess now almost 10 years since I first moved to Hermosa in, in 2012, you know, there's more families, more dogs. We, we've seen the way Hermosa has changed, and better and worse. I don't, I don't have an ideological perspective on how I want to see Hermosa change. I want the community that wants more vibrancy to have that, I want the community that wants... I want the community that wants to have and keep their parking spots to have that. It's not a question of, you know, I, what would it be ideal in my mind? Because I'm, I'm not sure. But what I do know is that there are competing interests at play. And the reason I'm interested in the planning commission is how do we mediate those? How do we find the reasonable perspective that is something we can implement? When I, when I first moved here, I remember a large debate was about whether or not it was serving alcohol after, after 10:00 PM. And there was the conflict of wanting a vibrant nightlife at Pier, but also wanting to protect neighbors' noise, noise pollution and just the, the incidents on, on, on the street outside of people's homes. It's hard to do both of them, but the city was able to. And finding pragmatic solutions is really sort of the way. I know this was a very long filibustary dodge to your question, but it's tough to start with, I don't have an ideological perspective on the direction of Hermosa and then offer an answer to that question that, that is satisfying. And so, I apologize for that, but, but that is what I see in my role.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here and thank you for your past service on other committees. So, one of the guiding principles of Plan Hermosa is to contribute to our economic and fiscal stability or vibrancy. How will you demonstrate leadership in achieving this principle as a planning commissioner?
So, I've, I've started two startups and successfully closed two startups. And so, you know, I am, I say I don't have an ideological perspective, but I, I do believe in, in, in small business and small businesses becoming large businesses and, and growth. And, you know, even this idea of economic vibrancy, I think, has some tension with this idea of sustainability. And so, I, I, I think it's, there, there are folks who would have Hermosa not change at all and, and, and would have Hermosa stay encased in the, in, in the beautiful bubble that it is today. That can't, can't be the way for, if we want to see economic growth and development. And I think stewardship of not only zoning, but also just the permissive environment of business is necessary for achieving our goals of sustainable growth. I think having someone on the commission who doesn't have personal skin in the game in terms of the businesses that they own in the neighborhood is important to providing a perspective that allows other people to figure out how we can facilitate and innovate. I think someone who has experience with businesses that don't necessarily have a large footprint in terms of the, on, on the street level, but do perhaps contribute to the tax base or can offer opportunities for people to work from home and stay in the community, I think are, are perspectives that we have to consider moving forward. I think having a public service background is, is useful, of course, in navigating the minutia of, of policy aspects that are associated with, 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 with running a city. But I also think someone having a, a business mindset and a business background and a pragmatic approach to, to, to building business is how you can facilitate that. I thought that the, the way the planning commission handled recently, there was a, a restaurant that ran afoul of alcohol, serving alcohol to a minor issue. And I thought that the empathy that the planning committee showed to trying to find a reasonable approach to take in terms of how do we handle the permitting, I think that matters. And being responsive and having the both emotional and intellectual empathy to potential business owners and understanding when those will run in conflict with people who want, want to, want to have a nice place to walk and want to have a place where they can ride their bike or want to have parking spaces is, is necessary. Again, it's not a concrete, I have a plan to bring in this type of business, but I, I don't think that that's necessarily what, what's called for here. What I think is necessary is just understanding that there are trade-offs everywhere and making the pragmatic trade-offs are what's important.
Thank you very much.
Really appreciate your time. Thank you. Thanks, everyone.
Thanks.
And last we have Matthew Walden.
Matthew Walden?
Good evening. Thank you for applying.
Thank you.
We have a lot of applicants. Thanks for being one of them and contributing to the community. And we are each going to ask one question and we're going to start with Councilmember Jackson and go down the line. So, go for it.
Good afternoon. Thanks for being here. And you sat in the room over there with six very impressive candidates, great members of our community. So, the, the simple question is why you and not one of those other six?
First of all, I have to say, it's a really great candidate pool and I really had a, a pleasure meeting everybody and really just getting to know my fellow community members well. So, I come in with private experience, 10 years working in tech, building products for Google and Disney and my own ventures. With that experience, I'd say I'm really good at three things. One, I know how to keep stuff in budget, which is important. Number two, I know how to have data drive decision-making. Not a single decision in my private career has been made on vibes only. It's a very much data, data-driven decision-making and using a scorecard or key indicators for success to advance the goals of the company. And then three, I know how to apply new tech to solve very real problems for real people, which is something that I think is extremely important for community resources to do in a public setting as well.
Thank you. My question pertains to land value recapture. That's an item that was passed a while back by this body. And I just wanted you to weigh in on where you think it's going? What did you think of it? Did you, you know, see it here? Just share opinions on it? Like it, don't like it? Can't be right or wrong, just want to hear your take on it.
Sorry, I missed her the first part. It's a land value.
Land value recapture, it's a program to incentivize development. I don't know if you read about it, maybe you haven't, but anything you want to weigh in on that, I'd be happy to hear your opinions.
Yeah, I'd say the way I view the planning commission's role is to really be stewards of the decision-making tool and the community indicators for the, plant Hermosa. It's a complicated issue where people's property comes into play, money's at play and emotions at play. It's complicated, it really takes a magnifying glass. I'd say as stewards of the community scorecard and the community indicators, it's got to be data-driven. I talked about my private experience and it's got to be something that is not just based on broad statements, but rather, you know, case by case.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're always looking for planning commissioners that are independent thinkers. So, I was just wondering if you could give an example of something in your past to show that you are that type of independent thinker and when you have gone against the grain to get something done?
Thanks for that question. So, back in 2017, you know, in a lot of the major cities, it was a, a big time for an influx of refugees. And with experience in tech, I saw an opportunity to apply what I've learned in building applications to solving not just user needs in a, in a fun setting, but in a setting where we're providing community value. So, I created a, a mobile application to assist new refugees, to plug into simple things that we might take for granted day-to-day, stuff like, how do I, you know, dispose of my trash and have the trash pick it up every week? Or how do I send, send mail? And hook them up with mentors in the community who could really connect and integrate with them. Not popular with everybody, it's something that can be a divisive issue. I did find though, that by applying technology in a way that was connecting and not isolating, it was a unique solution to a problem that made the issue much less divisive and much more collaborative.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Sorry, thank you for being here today. Hypothetically speaking, if you had total control over the future, and you're on the planning commission here, of course, what would the future Hermosa Beach look like in regard to density?
And I'll go back to, you know, my emphasis on being stewards of Plan Hermosa, the community scorecard. It's a great question and I do want to acknowledge, it has a lot of passion behind it. It's kind of the, the big, in, in many ways, the, the problem for our time and especially those of my generation feel it. Costs are high. You know, my wife and I moved here from the Bay Area about five years ago. We've raised our family here and saw it as a place to start, to lay down our roots and grow our family. And we did that for a reason. It's because Hermosa Beach has character that is, in my opinion, the best place for a young family to be. I want that to be a beacon that other young families see in our community. And to do so, I don't think it's a massive change from where we are today. There's a reason why we picked Hermosa Beach over other commu- communities that are nearby. And a lot of it is that we love our neighborhood. We love the fact that we have a single-family home. There's a yard for our daughter to play in. It's also expensive though, and I, I know it's a hairy situation for many of my generation. My dream future though, is to make minor tweaks to make this an even better place to raise a family. I'm talking about stuff like making the sidewalks more comfortable for folks with strollers, but not to drastically change the character of our community. Thank you.
Thank you for applying and trying to hopefully improve the community that we all love and, and live in. So, one of the guiding principles of Plan Hermosa is to contribute to our economic and fiscal stability. How will you demonstrate leadership in achieving this principle as a planning commissioner?
So, I spent my career in tech and as part of that, I think all of us were majorly disrupted during COVID and just experienced a lot of change. And one change that I've experienced in my own career and almost everybody I know has experienced this is a new emphasis on work from home and the possibility for remote work. Hermosa Beach and the South Bay more broadly, always comes up as one of the best places to live in the country. And I see it as just an excellent place to breed that culture of not only being a good place for remote work, you know, we're, we're not right next to downtown LA, we're not right next to Santa Monica yet to commute. But a place where there's still a community of innovation that we can breed. So, that's sort of the like ideal I'd keep in place is, how does Hermosa Beach become the place to be for remote workers who still want to stay plugged into an environment of innovation like they might have in a Silicon Valley or in a New York City?
Thank you very much. We're only allowed to give you one question each, so, thanks for chiming in there and being the last one we interviewed today, but thank you very much and we'll be hearing from you soon.
Thank you. Great to meet you all. Excited to serve however I can.
Thank you. Okay, I guess we're done. The appointment will be made during the regular council meeting this evening, February 25, 2025. And this special meeting is now adjourned at 4:48 PM.